Not getting off of their buses and walking down the middle of Edgewood with traffic zooming back and forth. I would, at this time, with, because of the concern that people have about the budget, but we will know about that in a couple of months, I would make a motion to direct staff to go ahead and do the, do the plan, do the engineering study with the, with the conception that based on how much money is available, we would do one or both sides this year or next year.
Alderman Roy Wesley was first. Mr. Cadella?
I thought he made a, I thought he made a motion.
Was that a motion?
I have a question to bring.
Was that a motion, Mr. Lewitin?
Yes, that's a motion.
If I have a second, I motion. Motion fails. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I got a question to bring. Through the state raised the income tax to 5%, but the city portion is zero getting from that 3% to 5%, correct?
Correct. We still, we still get the, the, the actual percentage changed from 10% to, was it, I'll have to go back and look, it's seven and a half or 8%. But the, we still get 10% on the first three and then nothing on that second two.
What I'm saying is what they added in, what they added into the new bill, the city still gets zero.
On the new percentage, that is correct, yes.
Okay, so there is no more new money coming in. And just remember, if anyone watched the news the other night, the capital improvement plan was, just went bye-bye with the appellate court. So, we're starting over with that too then. So, with the state the way it is, that's why I'm concerned about spending the money of what we're gonna have. So, that's what I'm looking at.
Mr. Wilson?
Just a point of clarification, if I may. The funding source for the CIP is utility tax and the non-home rule sales tax, the income tax that the state owes us is a funding mechanism for the general funds. There's not actually a nexus between the two. Just, you know, I know everybody's concerned about that, but they are two separate, they fund separate things. The CIP isn't funded through the income tax, so.
Right.
And they did pay us two months this month, so that'll be in the packet on Friday.
We're still missing some months. Four months. Alderman Roy Wesley.
I don't wanna scare anyone or anything here, but I did hear a rumor that at one time or another, the federal government was talking about giving laws that states will be able to file bankruptcy. I don't know how true that is, but that might be the next thing coming down the pipe. Did you hear anything on that, Brad?
No, we didn't.
I probably saw the same article that you did. Currently, states are precluded from declaring bankruptcy because they're declared sovereign entities in and of themselves, so they can't declare bankruptcy. But there has been, according to the article that I read, some backroom talkings about possibly allowing states to declare bankruptcy to get out money through their bills that they owe, as well as pension obligations.
Okay. Alderman Coles?
We've been, we've been talking about sidewalks. Now we're talking about the state allowing bankruptcy. Let's stay on one item. Are we on one item? The people wanna know if we were gonna put sidewalks in. We told them that we haven't got the money right now, that we would make a consultant, we would put it on a, on the list, on the list, if the money comes in, we could, we gotta get engineering, and that's the best we can do. I realize that sidewalks are very important, especially for people that are elderly, because if they sell their house, they're gonna sell it to people that have kids. And you're talking about things that you don't know what's gonna happen in the state, the whole federal government can go bankrupt right now, the rate it's going. So, I mean, let's get the sidewalks done, and then we can go on with something else. I've been sitting here for a half hour listening to this, and we seem to be getting nothing done.
Alderman.
Sure.
After Alderman Coles' comments, it's maybe a little late, but the mayor and managers' conference did suggest that each of the municipalities in DuPage County send a resolution to the State House asking that we still do get the 10% from this new tax increase, because right now evidently it isn't in there. So, just for your information.
Okay. I, I'm gonna make a motion to leave this in the CIP project unfunded at this time. But we will keep the sidewalk petition on.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
All right. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I, I, I wanna get it funded.
No, I wanna, no, because I wanna get this thing funded.
Okay. So, it passed that it goes unfunded at this time. Do a roll call on that one. Do a roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
Aye.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is, the next item is report and recommendation consulting engineer service contract, service proposal. In your packet, you receive a, a proposal for in-house engineer, which we were, and go off for our RFP, but our engineer firm Baxter Woods gave us a proposal. Staff recommendation, a staff will recommend that we hire Baxter Woods to be our in-house engineer for one year on this proposal. Mr. Murris?
As Chairman Wesley had stated, that is gonna be staff's recommendation, but just a really brief historical background. About five months ago, the city did terminate our in-house engineer. Right after that termination, Baxter and Woodman was brought on to handle all our engineering services. They have been doing a good job for the previous five months. I think all of us can agree on that. At the beginning of our relationship, they did submit an hour, an hourly rate, which was more than fair. They're offering to continue that rate for the period of one year, continue that relationship with us. The only change being that they would recommend the four parameters outlined in the memorandum. The first parameter, that Baxter and Woodman would be, would essentially have the first right of refusal on projects under $50,000, engineering projects, that is. Second bullet point, that they would be considered for projects over 50, so we would not automatically exclude them if we thought that they were the best firm to do, to do the job on that specific project. Three, that Baxter and Woodman be able to complete current projects that they are already working on if they're over that $50,000 amount. That's referencing our GIS program. Baxter and Woodman has been working on that for us since the very, very beginning, when we first got GIS a number of years ago, and they definitely do a good job on that. Four, that Baxter and Woodman would obviously honor the current rate for an additional year. And after that year, we can decide that, hey, we wanna go in-house, or, hey, we want a different engineering firm to do this, or whatever it is, we decide at that time. But if we continue on with Baxter and Woodman, they would keep relatively close to that same rate from their original, original proposal. Staff has done some research on this. That proposal is a good proposal compared to current rates out there. We also have checked references with Baxter and Woodman, and all those references did check out. I'm assuming that the council's gonna have some questions on this, so hopefully myself or Mr. Stefan from Baxter can answer those questions. But at this time, that would conclude my brief summary.
Cadella?
Before we get into, I don't wanna say minutia, but the fine details of the proposal before us, I just kinda have a big picture comment to make on the subject of, of engineering. I'm a firm believer that we should have an on-staff in-house engineer. I'm gonna, I'm gonna reserve the right to not make comment on, there were too many comments on who we had before and maybe where it was right, and maybe where it was wrong. But I will say, I think in the past, management has failed to properly manage the engineering department. Jeff, you're new, you know a lot about a lot of things, and because this is staff's recommendation, I'll support this for a year. And this is nothing against Baxter and Woodman, I just think ultimately, we're gonna get the best service and the most loyalty by, by an in-house staff member. And that's the direction I wanna see this go. So, basically, I just wanna tell you here in public, I'd really like to see you spend this next year with Baxter and Woodman, if this is what happens here tonight, learning as much as you can, because if I'm sitting up here next year, I'm gonna come back at you and say, we really need to do what this council did at one time, direct staff to do a few months ago, look for full-time. We've had a change of staff, things are different now, I understand all that, so that's why I'll be real flexible on this. But I'm sorry, no consultant is, is capable of, and through no fault of their own. I mean, Baxter and Woodman, as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I can tell, is a fine engineering firm. And, and I think they've done an admirable job of stepping into our city engineer position. I just think, I think in the long run, it's, it's healthier for the city to, to be able to handle this and make in-house, entirely in-house decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Alderman Roy Wesley?
Jeff, you have the rate here of $100 per hour for a 40-hour week. What is the fee for, if they go over 40 hours?
The normal billing rate.
What is that?
It depends on the Baxter and Woodman employee that would be working on a project.
Well, how do we?
Let's just say that...
We need a, we need numbers. That's what the budget's based on, is numbers.
What we would bill the city is with our standard billing rates that are approved through IDOT. It's our IDOT standard billing rates, which, which go through IDOT's accounting system and process, and that's, that would be our, our standard rate. Does that answer your question?
Not really, because it doesn't give me a number, but, I, I mean, how do you, how do you put a number in a budget, then? You know, that's your job.
Typically, we're not expecting to go over 40 hours a week. We've been working with Baxter and Woodman for over five months now, and we, we haven't gone over 40 hours, I don't think, at all. So, we haven't run into that issue yet. I think our highest was 37.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cadella?
To, to follow up on Alderman Wesley, I mean, that is the nature of the consulting beast. This is not, this is not Baxter and Woodman trying to pull the wool over our eyes or trying to be elusive. This is what consulting is. This is why, for a primary position like this, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it as a permanent solution.
First of all, I'd like to make a, a motion that we accept the recommendation of staff and entered into this year contract with Baxter and Woodman, and I'd like to make a comment after.
I, I have a motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it. Okay, my comment is that...
Hang, hang on one minute.
Oh, go ahead.
I was actually just seeking direction to move forward with the agreement. I'd like to have our attorney draft an agreement with Baxter and Woodman for the year. So, this is just in concept, and there's some, still some small details that would have to be worked out and some points of clarity, but in general, this would be...
You want direction to...
To have the city attorney work with Baxter and Woodman, and then we'll bring you back the official proposal at a council meeting where you can pass it then.
Okay, would you rephrase? I mean, would you accept that motion?
I accept that motion.
Secondary agree. Alderman Shaki, you have the floor.
Okay. I have been the longest person in pushing for a city engineer, but with the disaster we had, if I may call it that, with that project, it didn't work, and I think after sitting down and examining what we have here in this proposal, that it's the best way to go for this point. We can try it for a year and see if it works. Thank you.
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I wanna oppose. Jeff, so you got your direction to work with attorney to draft a contract? And before, Jeff, before that, will that come back to us on the contract, before you sign it?
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna bring the contract to a future council meeting, and then we'll get final approval on that.
There's a couple of issues on the scope that I talked to you about.
Yeah, I have talked with Attorney Bond before, so he's, he's aware of it.
All right. Items considered for your meeting, replacement of silver maple trees in Parkway February, illegal sewer connections February, citywide drainage solution February 24th, treatment plant, direction on February 24th, that will become, any other items? Any? Mayor Johnson?
Well, now that you have a new streetlight proposal, an email came in this afternoon by Georgetown West Homewaters Association, asking we look for a, consider a streetlight, I think it's on Hoover, to light up the playground area where there's been some crime problems in the street as well. So, if you could add that to a future agenda.
Okay. We'll look at that on Hoover for... Anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion adjourned. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
January 27, 2011. Will the minute taker please reflect, same members present, although Alderman Lewitin has stepped out, I believe, for a moment? There's a quorum. Next item, I make a motion to approve minutes dated January 13, 2011. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Police?
On page 2, one correction.
Okay.
Money can be, item number three, first paragraph there, money can be taken from water and sewer fund reserves, 80 million, I believe that should be 8 million.
Will the minute taker please make that correction?
We don't have 80 million.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be nice.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a discussion on, an audit. It's called AM Audit, and there's gonna be a presentation with that. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Correct. Back in, I wanna say mid-December, staff met with AM Audit, took over just conceptually what they do and if it made sense for the city. Since that time, we've been in communication with them to get them on the agenda for tonight. I let they know what they do better than, than I do, for sure. But in concept, what they do is they look at our utility bills, see if we're overpaying for anything, paying tariffs or fees that we shouldn't be paying. I believe one of the other functions is they look at our franchise agreements, make sure we're getting what we should be getting out of those agreements, and that, you know, we're being treated fairly by the utility companies, things of that nature. So, and they go through and effectively, they, I kinda joke with one of their guys, you know, they look at our bills and tell us if they can save us money, if you boil it down. So, with that, there's a few representatives from AM Audit, as well as Mr. Mayo from Itasca, former county board chairman here to represent them, so I will pass it over to them at this time.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, my name is Bill Mayo, and I am a governmental consultant to AM Audit. With me this evening is Greg Carr, the president of AM Audit, Mike Ferrer, who would be your representative, and Jim Say, who had to step out due to the length of the meeting. He's old. AM Audit specializes in working with municipalities on a contingency basis, which is somewhat unique. The president is gonna explain what they can do for you, and hopefully, how they may, may be able to plug a few holes in your budget in the future. Basically, what they do is they look in specific areas, again, on a contingency basis, to see if your municipality is owed money from various utilities and other sources. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to the president, and then we'll be available for questions when he's done. He'd originally planned a 20-minute presentation, but because of the sidewalk dispute, we were gonna cut it to five.
Well, I can do it in less if need be. Good evening, my name's Greg Carr, and I'm founder and president of AM Audit. I formed AM Audit in 2002. After leaving NICOR, I was vice president of NICOR for seven years, and I saw that there was an opportunity in the governmental municipality market to deal with some of the complexities that were occurring in the energy industry. There's a lot of changes with deregulation, and as well with the areas of telecommunications. There's a lot going on, there's a lot of complexities, and what I found is, is that municipalities were not well-equipped to deal with these complexities. And so, I formed the company in 2002, and since then, we've done 75 municipalities in Illinois. We specialize on Illinois municipalities. And you can break our auditing down into three buckets. And I, I, listening to the discussion, I think this, the timing is very, very good for having an audit being done, particularly since it's done on a contingency fee. Wooddale, like every community that we talked to, I just came from Highland Park earlier today, and they're experiencing the same difficulties, they're even having to lay staff off. So, everyone is experiencing revenue issues. And so, what we do is come in and look at primarily three areas. The areas of taxation, you have utility taxes that are collected on gas or electricity, and no one has ever audited those. When we formed our company in 2002, we were the first company to ask, literally ask a utility for data to audit as to the tax collections that they do. And they, at that time, did not have the ability to even produce data out of their system. A lot's changed since then, and now we can get those kinds of informations to look at the tax collections and make sure they're accurate. So, one area that, and it's the most popular area, obviously, is to make sure that all the businesses and residences that are in the incorporated boundaries of Wooddale are paying the appropriate level of taxation, and we find in some cases that they're not. And our service gets those businesses, residences added to the tax rolls, and so thereby increase revenues to the city. And this is done on a contingency fee basis. So, if we do this and find nothing, the city's out nothing. And I think that's the beauty of the model that we offer, is, is that, you know, listening to the discussion here tonight, obviously, spending money to save money is not something that's high on anyone's agenda. And in our particular case, you don't have to spend money to save money. We spend the money first, we take the risk, and we go out and do these audits. So, the first bucket would be the tax collection area. The second area is your actual costs that you're paying for utilities. You buy gas, you buy electricity, you, you have telecommunications expenses, and in most cases, you don't have experts that know whether those are appropriate or not, and that's where my firm comes in. I have 30 years in the energy, energy industry, we have people on staff that have as much as 35 years of industry experience in telecommunications. So, we, we know where the skeletons are in the closet when it comes to utility costs, where you can reduce those costs, eliminate fees and expenses and taxes and so forth. So, that's the second area that we look at. And then the third and last area is your franchise agreements that you have with the various utilities. You're entitled to compensation under those agreements, and in some cases, these agreements are 30, 40 years old, haven't been looked at in years. I, I literally saw an agreement that was on onion skin paper, it was 50 years old, and no one had ever looked at it. And when we started examining it, we found that they had overlooked areas where they could have been compensated for uses of rights away. So, what we do is come in and we look at those franchise agreements and dig into them, and make sure that you're getting all the benefits that you can get under those agreements. And so, the three areas, again, tax, franchise, and cost. And we do this on a contingency fee basis, we share with you what we find, and you only owe us a fee if we find something. So, that is a quick five-minute thumbnail sketch of what we offer.
Alderman Police?
I like the part of, we don't owe you no fee unless you find something. Is that gonna be discussed with staff before we vote on it, what the fee as a percentage is gonna be, or, or how's that work?
Our, our program is a 50-50 sharing for 36 months. And that's, that's our, our program, and we found that's very competitive in the marketplace.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Madam Chairman, you're looking for a motion to go into this audit? Is that what it is, or just a presentation?
It, well, it's a motion to direct staff to sit down and look at the contract terms and conditions, and then come back with the revised copy.
All right, I'll make that informal motion.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a second? Anything else on the question? And is there anything else, Mr. Mayo, or that you'd like to share?
I would just say, Madam Chairman, that I submitted a copy of the contract to the mayor for your city attorney's review, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? You too. Thank you. Okay, next item is item for future meetings. Item A, motor fuel tax audit, some good information coming back on that. Item B, water rates for February as well. Item C, grade separation referendum, community outreach strategy. Item D, health insurance renewal. Item E, fiscal year 2012, budget beginnings. Item F, property buyout policies. Item G, CNG grant. Any other items? Mr. Murris?
Just point of clarity, item C is a typo, it should also say NYMEC, Community Outreach Strategy, because we're doing that referendum for the cheaper electric rates, so it should be grade separation and NYMEC. We'll talk about both outreach strategies.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
That's just an exception.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Alderman Shaki?
I'm not sure how it would work, but I would like to have a resolution to the state requesting that we continue to get 10% of that income tax, if the higher tax is approved, which it has been. We're not sure if they're going to continue to give us that amount, so just a resolution stating that to the state.
Mr. Wilson, would, would that be okay to put that on the agenda? Is that something we can do?
I'll say certainly, but I see the mayor has his hand up, so I might defer to him.
Would it go straight to city councils? Mr. Mayor?
If you want, we can do it by resolution. Typically, Mr. Murris or I send letters of support to the appropriate state representatives that represent us, and that's the way we've done it in the past. But if you wanna make it a more formal resolution, you certainly have the right to do that.
I would like to make it a more formal resolution.
We'll try to get it in time for next council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
I will call to order the January 27, 2011 Planning, Zoning and Building Committee meeting. Will the minute taker please reflect Alderman Lewitin has returned, and Alderman Roy Wesley has walked out for a moment, and has returned also. And I will make a motion to approve the minutes, the meeting dated January 13, 2011. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, or is there any questions or concerns about this? No? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right. Report and recommendation, increase in electrical license renewal fee. John Forrest explained this as a matter of housekeeping. John, would you...